Let's stand for pledge. Attention, salute. Welcome to the meeting. The board of the state is here. You're welcome. I'm ready. Come on outside, please. Thank you very much. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of school for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens in their time of trouble. Comment prior to action items on the agenda. We ask that speakers identify themselves and their home district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes. Nor should provide equity to all speakers in this meeting with reasonable length. If you have more information than can be summarized in three minutes, please provide the materials for boards to review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some of the votes from Mr. Groves are second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Meyer. All the table. Aye. Post. This board. Is our school board leaning out here?
Seer.
Seer. Okay, moving on to your donations.
Jimmy Swindler donated $25 to the class of 2025. BP Prox Tree and Landscaping donated $1,200 to the FFA Adopt a Family. Virginia Timber Harvesters donated $1,200 to the FFA for Adopt a Family. And Paula Javelinrea donated $400 to the fourth grade field trip.
Thank you very much. The donations will be accepted during the consent agenda. The note states, "Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from our September 12th score meeting?"
Seven.
Is there a question, Mr. Myers, or second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Groves, or a comment? All the table, aye? Aye, post up. This board. Mr. Groves, have you had talked to him? What he did?
I have, and everything motion being?
Aye. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Come on.
Is there a question, Mr. Groves, or second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Meyer. All the table, aye?
Aye.
Aye, post up. This board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board. Tonight's remarkable spotlight actually comes from the elementary school. So to introduce the spotlight, I'm going to ask Principal Jennifer Wessinger to come up.
Good evening, everybody. I'm excited to share with our CES fall spotlights. We have a couple of things that have been going on for elementary schools. So I'm going to start with one. This year, for the 2324 school year, we started a new program to celebrate student success called the Panther of the Month. And this program aims to shine a spotlight on those students who constantly go above and beyond in their academic pursuits, demonstrate outstanding character, and contribute positively to our school community. Some characteristics that we look for are being a good citizen, being respectful, responsible, having a positive attitude, willingness to help others, to be a role model, and possess leadership qualities. Each month, the home room teachers choose a Panther of the Month, which then we recognize on the announcements. We do a monthly picture. And then we have the administration, we do a special lunch with them. We bring them in a special dessert. And then we got them some special Panther swag. So they get like a little bracelet that has, you know, fog prints on it. Or we got little gold, you know, tattoos that they can put on. So just a way to kind of celebrate the students. And we do have the picture for our September, which was of course blasted on social media as well. But that was our first Panthers of the Month in September. And it was really exciting to look forward to October as well. Another highlight that I want to share is that Ms. Sealy's middle school theater arts class has started its second year. And the seventh grade students this year are building upon their theater knowledge, learning about theater history, theatrical styles. And this year, they've started to practice memorizing their techniques. So today, we have a special treat for you because the seventh grade theater arts class has been preparing the one act play, The Corpse Bride, to perform for the middle school classes. In addition to learning their lines and blocking, the class planned and prepared all of the technical elements, the costumes, the makeups, the props, the lights. And they also collaborated with the seventh grade art class to design the set that you're going to see on stage tonight. So tonight, you're going to get a preview of this play. And the roles would be played, a few of the roles would be played by some students who were unable to make it. So we have some that have generously volunteered tonight to take on this role. And so I just want to give to a special shout out to Ms. Sealy because she goes above and beyond for this theater arts program. And the kids have absolutely just loved this. And it is amazing to see some of them come out of their shells and really getting involved with this. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce the play to you, The Corpse Bride.
Yeah, our podcast, if we can join the audience, that would be so.
Just give us a second.
I don't even want to get married. I don't want to marry. I want to adventure. Instead, what do I get in an arranged marriage with a girl I've never met? I mean, it's 1870, you know, see? The world is changing out there. And I am stuck in some village in the middle of nowhere, stuck in the Middle Ages.
It's not that bad. I'll be.
How could she be? She couldn't even find her own husband in her own village.
Didn't your uncle motion step this up?
What does he know? He's a butcher. He doesn't know people from cats.
Lots of people still have arranged marriages.
Well, it's far better and very old fashioned.
Whatever, I'll be.
I bet she's a big cat and twice as ugly. I'll be my cow wife. How much longer do you think it is?
Just a mileage away, so it's fine up there.
Let's stop here. I'm tired. What's that?
What?
Nothing coming out from the ground.
Just a twig or something.
Maybe, but it looks like a finger.
I'll be.
No, look, I have the ring.
I'll be. You crazy?
With the ring, I see where. See, it fits perfectly.
I'll be.
Behold, you are consecrated to me with this ring.
Are you crazy?
According to the laws of Moses and Israel, better a twig than a cow.
Husband!
What?
You are my husband.
So?
You say you saw me at the wedding dance.
So? So?
You gave me this ring.
So?
Now we're married.
Well, Mama Mary?
Yes, dear Mama Mary.
Chief Rabbi! Rabbi!
What? Rabbi, calm down, catch your breath. What is it?
Rabbi!
Rabbi?
I. He. We have, we have.
What?
We have an important question.
Important question. Yes, what's on?
Rabbi, suppose you're walking through woods, you know?
Yes.
And you happen to see a stick?
So?
It's a stick. It looks like a finger, a bony finger. And you just happened to put the wedding ring on it?
Why would you do that?
No reason. Just suppose you did, and you said those words.
What words?
Behold, you are consecrated to me with this ring.
Oh, my.
And he did the wedding dance.
Well, the, well, the dance doesn't add up with those words.
Would, would it be real, the marriage?
To a twig?
To the woman!
What woman?
To the woman who had the finger that you thought was a twig.
What? The twig that was actually a woman, that was actually a corpse.
Would it be real, the marriage?
I, I'm not sure.
She's not a real woman, actually. She's a corpse.
The woman with the ring. She's not a woman, actually.
She's not a woman, actually. She's a corpse.
Does that happen to you?
Does that happen to you?
Does that happen to you?
Um, no, no. I'm just asking, just a theoretical question. Yes, just a theoretical question. I like that. Always ask some questions, questions, questions.
That's good.
My husband, there you are.
Oh, no!
That was my husband.
This is your question.
I, I, I.
This is my husband. He has placed his wedding ring on my finger and pronounced the song "We're married."
But you're a corpse.
I am, but I hope to open it in a bride.
Rabbi, Rabbi, help me. I can't marry a corpse.
You put this ring on my finger, did you not?
I, I, I did.
Now we are married.
This is a very serious matter.
Why are they taking so long? I could already tell. You'll be a wonderful husband. Is this true? Are you my future husband, married corpse?
Are you Rebecca?
Yes, I am. And you are?
This is Obi. He's supposed to be your future husband. Not a cow wife at all.
What?
It's not that. It's just that.
Excuse me? This man is my husband.
What? We just got married. See, here's the ring.
Is this true?
It's not like that. It was an accident. I didn't mean to.
He gave me this ring and he did the marriage dance. Is this true?
No, it's not exactly. It's just that.
He gave it to me.
Yes.
Oh, no, my life is ruined. I'll never be married.
So we have two questions. Did you indeed put the ring, the gold ring on her finger? Did you dance around her three times singing? Did you indeed pronounce the wedding bells? In their entirety?
Yes, that's a yes.
Yes?
Yes.
What a foolish boy.
How, how dare you mark the wedding, Rebecca? How dare you mark the wedding bells?
I can't believe this.
You need to find someone else. I'll be with mine.
Since you put the wedding ring on the finger of Corpse Bride and you danced around it three times singing, reciting the wedding bells, we have determined that that constitutes a proper wedding ceremony.
Yay! There, there, hon. It all gets better with time.
We have decided. When two people marry, they're only married until death parts them. In this case, death parted them before they got married. So the marriage was over court, not somewhere.
Oh, no, no, I'll never have a husband. There, there, hon. It all gets better with time. It was my last chance. There's nothing for me now. Oh, sweet, poor day. Lord, we provide a wedding to ride.
Yay, correct! Now I can marry you!
You never like a wedding night? Did you? I did. The process. They rub up a wedding? They did. And marry you away? Yes, and they did. I know, I know. And they, they never found a boss. The process just looking at the board still. What a beautiful wedding. They so. You never got your wedding night? Never got your wedding? No. Poor thing, I'll take care of you. Thank you. Rebecca. Rebecca, hello, Rachel. Rachel, I'll let your journey follow the rules. You can rest in peace and write that our children, our children, so you can be careful and never forget. Your ring.
Our CPS this year, based on Lee Cockrell's book. And in this book, Cockrell outlines ten practical leadership strategies that we talk about as a leadership team as well, in our cabinet meetings, in our principal meetings. And some highlights that I've experienced from this book so far are the importance of attention to detail and effective communication. And our staff and students are also working on creating magic every day in those classrooms with their students. Oh, sorry. Siri fell back on the way. Okay. So our overarching goal at our CES is that our CES will provide a literacy-enriched focus embedded into instruction that promotes academic success in all subject areas. The academic domains include English and mathematics. In language arts, all students will increase their instructional reading level by a year's growth and close the learning gap with an emphasis on students with disabilities and multiple races. Both of these subgroups, students with disabilities and multiple races, were a Level Three in the 22-23 school year, which is why they have become an area of need and focus for this year. In mathematics, all our CES students will continue to improve in fact fluency and number sense with an emphasis on increasing the pass rate for students with disabilities. This subgroup was a Level Two in the 22-23 school year, making it a focus in math for this year. The next strand is our school environment. So one domain is chronic absenteeism. And although, whoo, we were a Level One last year, we want to continue to decrease our absenteeism rates by 10%. The next domain is positive school culture. The goal is that our CES will increase the school culture for all staff and students by enhancing a positive academic and social-emotional learning-focused culture through maintaining high expectations and providing support. The next few slides will tell how the goals will be achieved and the action steps from our CES. So reading. The essential actions in reading are number one, eighty percent of preschool through third grade students will meet the Paus Spring Benchmark Assessment. Number two, eighty percent of third through seventh grade students will meet the Reading AIMS Spring Benchmark Assessment and pass the Spring Reading SOL with a score of 400 or higher. And number three, all our CES students will continue to increase the words per minute and oral reading fluency, which will increase the pass rate for students with disabilities and multiple races. Our action steps to make those goals happen in reading are: We have implemented PEGERTY routines in grades pre-K through third. PEGERTY is an explicit and systematic phonemic awareness curriculum. Morphology has been implemented in grades four through fifth. Morphology is the study of structure and the formation of words in the English language, essentially word study, is basically word study in the intermediate grade levels. All staff in grades K through second have been trained in Oregon Billingham, including multisensory instruction and/or the science of reading. This summer, pacing guides were updated and shared with staff at the beginning of the school year by our specialist. Progress monitoring will continue with AIMS Web biweekly. Daily resource time is part of every grade level schedule. This time will be used for mediation, enrichment, and high-intensity tutoring. Students identified for the high-intensity tutoring will include the AIMS Web data and a score of 415 or below on the Spring 2023 Reading SOL. We'll continue to differentiate instruction. Formative and substantive assessments will measure student progress. The student growth assessments will be given in the fall and mid-year, and our reading benchmark will be given in October and March as an indicator to inform instructional decisions. Biweekly reading CLT, those are collaborative learning team meetings, will include our special education teachers this year and our content teachers as well. So the goal is that our reading standards will be reinforced in those content areas as well to help close that gap. Daily fluency practice and other opportunities to practice oral reading fluency will be included in lesson plans. In math, our essential actions are: Number one, eighty percent of preschool and kindergarten students will meet the VKRP Benchmark. Number two, students with disabilities will increase their pass rate on the Spring Math SOL by 10% or show one year's growth. Number three, eighty percent of first and second grade students will score at or above the 25th percentile, which puts them in a Tier One, as measured by AIMS data in the spring of 2024. And seventy-five percent of third through seventh grade students will pass the Spring Math SOL with a score of 400 or higher. The action steps for math are analyzing the fall VKRP data with math specialists to determine next steps of instruction. Daily number sets and fluency routines have been implemented and included in the planning of pacing guides. A daily spiral review to reinforce and maintain students previously learned math concepts and skills over time. Math also had updated pacing guides that were presented to staff at the beginning of the school year. Progress monitoring, as determined from AIMS Web, will continue to be biweekly. Daily resource time will also be used for mediation, enrichment, and the high-intensity tutoring. Formative and substantive assessments will measure student progress. Student growth assessments will be given in the fall and mid-year, and a math benchmark will be given in October and March as an indicator to form instructional decisions. And there will be biweekly math collaborative learning team meetings that will include special education teachers, and special education teachers will collaborate and plan with grade levels on a weekly basis. For chronic absenteeism, the essential actions are: Number one, our CPS attendance team will monitor attendance daily and follow up the student families who are absent for seven days. And number two, the RCES attendance team will follow the division-wide tiered attendance system, which involves the truancy and attendance officer touching base with families to develop an attendance improvement plan once eight or more unexcused absences occur during a scheduled meeting. The action steps towards decreasing chronic absenteeism are to take attendance promptly at 8:45, so the attendance clerk has time to touch base with each absent student that is unexcused. The division-wide tiered attendance plan will be followed. And administration will monitor chronically absent students on a biweekly basis and will discuss the importance of attendance, and will continue to build those relationships to educate families on the attendance issue. Positive school culture. So the goal for positive school culture is that our CES will increase the school culture for all staff and students by enhancing a positive academic and social-emotional learning-focused culture through maintaining high expectations and providing support. The action steps for staff are to have staff complete weekly staff check-ins using a Google form to assess their attitude and needs for the upcoming week. I currently send those out every Monday to staff. They complete the Google form, and then there's different things like I'm doing great, feeling my best, I've got a lot of work to do, but I'm gonna be okay. Or they can also have a few others, but they may say, I'm a little overwhelmed, I need TLC. So when I see those options, I reach out to those staff and I say, hey, what can I do to support you? What's going on? Sometimes it's something personal that's going on, sometimes it's I didn't have enough time to get all my, you know, my materials ready, so, you know, if I go and make copies for you, how can I help you, you know, to work through that? We also encourage our staff to take attendance fifteen minutes daily to visit our new staff wellness room as a place to relax, rejuvenate, and recharge. Monthly faculty meetings will pay it forward with the R Awards from Lee Cockrell's book Creating Magic. So at the beginning of every faculty meeting, step three, staff members are recognized for appreciation, recognition, and encouragement, and then those three will then pay it forward to three others in the next faculty meeting. And then the action steps for establishing a positive school culture for students are: Our peer mentor program, it has already hit the ground running for seventh and sixth. These students have completed an application saying that they want to be a peer mentor. They go through an interview process, and they have to maintain good grades and behavior to remain being a peer mentor. And their responsibility includes that they mentor some of our younger students. We're gonna start safety patrols this year that will help us with, you know, that we'll have patrols that'll be on the bus that will come out and kind of help make sure kids get in and out of the bus. We'll have some that will help us with car riders, some that will help us in the morning. And then they'll also be helping some of our younger students with some tutoring, so if they need some extra support with something, you'll go and support them in the classroom too for academics. As I already mentioned earlier, we also have the Panther of the Month, which is based on being a role model to others. Students receive their names and pictures in front lobby and are announced on the morning announcements. Students and families will attend our RCES events twice a year, focusing on literacy and math-sponsored events. And then also an increase in our Spirit Days and meeting with the SBA will also promote positive school culture. So that is the Continued School Improvement Plan for the elementary school.
It is a busy bunch.
It is a busy bunch.
I was looking at your spreadsheet too. There's a lot of details and your names. So I hope you have the resources to take care of all of these details. It's a lot.
It is. And we have, we have a great team, our specialist team, we have admin team, so we, we all have our parts to make sure that everything flows smoothly and...
Yeah, especially like having older students help to teach younger students. I mean, enjoy reading together, enjoy working together, that definitely is what I remember that to this day for my own experience. That reinforces the learning for the older students as well. It's a good, good step, I think, if that's more active.
If you couldn't tell from all the work Mrs. Wissinger has done with her instructional team, how much data they have pulled together, really honed in on what's important. And I love that, how you're focusing in on that reading fluency and the words per minute, because they have honed it into just about a 101, 95% accurate correlation between those who will, correct me if I'm wrong, score, or be identified on the AIMS Web for targeted assistance. So that's incredible. Even our Virginia tier system supports team, the consultants, that was pretty amazing, groundbreaking work, that you were able to hone that in so that you can really funnel those resources and leverage those where they're needed and important. So that's very well done, so congratulations.
Thanks. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Mr. Stewart, Principal Stewart, come on up.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, Madam Superintendent, Madam Clerk, members of Cabinet, my lords, ladies, and gentlemen. May I have a moment of personal privilege, Mr. Chairman? This afternoon, I was driving my son to school. Typically, he rides the bus home, but I took him home today because I wanted to give him a snack, spend some time with him, knowing that I have work to do. He's at football practice right now in church, that's right, at Catholic Church, hopefully he doesn't get hurt. And so one of the, I worked on myself, so, one of the questions I learned a long time ago as a teacher is not to ask students, "How was school today?" You won't get an answer. And so I asked my son, "What did you learn today?" And he said to me, Madam Principal, he said, "I learned in Miss Morgan Molina's fourth grade class. I learned about morphology." I had no idea what that was. And so as a, as a parent, Madam Principal, I want to say that, Jennifer, you and your leadership team, your social division, what, what you're doing is resonating with the teachers and a four-year-old, a fourth grader, nine-year-old female, so thank you on behalf of the parents of the fourth grader. All right, back to the job. Rockingham County High School, we are busy doing lots of work this year. Our full program and the things that we're doing is located in our Continued School Improvement Plan, which the superintendent and the clerk is providing for you. I'd like to take a couple moments to give you a few highlights from that plan. Our overarching goal at the high school, and for every county and county public schools, is make sure we provide an environment that meets students' and staff's social, emotional needs while enhancing the academic growth for students, especially in the four core areas. That's what people pay attention to. There's a couple different strands. Strand one deals with the teaching and the learning part of our business. In English, language arts, last year, we want our students to score 78%. We want to grow that this year to 85% in the reading standard of learning test. Last year in writing, our students scored 63%, we want to take that to 75%. Don't let those numbers alarm. Those numbers actually is above by two or three percentage points above that state. And so there's some changes that has happened with the English test this year. There's gonna be a reading and writing and a tracing test. The Division Superintendent, our academic services coordinator, Mrs. Wissinger, the elementary principal, and I, we have been meeting over the past month and a half, really trying to figure out how to tackle that on a vertical and a horizontal level. We have some strategies and some new mechanisms at places at the high school where we feel comfortable with the growth this year in English reading and writing. In terms of mathematics, our goal is to increase our student achievement across the board from 75% to 85%. One of the many highlights of the high school, because we have an extremely strong math department. They have performed year in and year out for the school division, even outpacing our neighboring school divisions, our peer school divisions when we compare, and the state. And so we want to take that one step higher this year. We have some programs that the Division Superintendent will allocate to you later this meeting about our high, all-in, high-intensity tutoring that's going to do some wonders, particularly for students in the eighth grade at our high school. We're looking forward to that. In the area of science, they changed the test only, it's a couple different tactics. So our goal is to go from 61% to 75%. Again, that's where the state is. Rockingham County Public Schools, drive yourself one outpacing the state, so I don't want that number to alarm you, but we're making the right strides. We are in a resource room right now led by Ms. Karen Ellis, which is getting us in contact with other school divisions that are also struggling with science instruction, trying to figure out how to appropriately work that eighth-grade science SOL, which really incorporates grades six, seven, and eight, and our biology SOL. By the way, our biology SOL last year did extremely well, carried us in science. So we feel good that we're on the right track there. And in history, our goal is to go from 56% to 75%. Students have just got to do better in, in history. One of the things that our school-based instructional team looked at was, how do we get these basic concepts across to students in a way that can connect and relate to them? And so one of the things that we've introduced this semester, I actually am a former recovery history teacher, the Division Superintendent, myself, Mrs. Ellis, we took a look at some curriculum rewriting, we took, rewrote the history curriculum for grades eight through 12, and so we hope that we see some things in that period. And so I think we're gonna do, okay, I got our teams together, we have three teachers, they're very good teachers, they're very strong teachers, that's why we don't really understand the disconnect, but we, we feel that we have some instructional strategies that's gonna really help us tackle that. One of the teachers, Mr. Pretty Wong, he uses some brotherhood strategies. Those are some high-touch, high-aiming strategies that teachers use to engage kids, some of the forums.
I see a number by name, Mr. Stewart, with the history standards, we talked about this before, when they changed the evaluation requirements for those verified credits and the number of credits you would need for your history, the students finish that in eighth or ninth grade generally, so the bulk of your history SOL scores that are reported, take out some of your best test papers out of the norm. So that's what you'll see across the board when you look at a lot of histories that pace that way, and that's something you've been grappling with as well. So students who generally may not have passed an SOL earlier on may have to take those off the level of histories and then have to try to pass more difficult content as well, the way that those verified credits have changed. So that's a challenge that we're dealing with. Mr. Stewart has had some great ideas with the history department to try to pace that a little bit more seamlessly through the content. Thank you.
Thank you. So how are we gonna do this work? A lot of strategies. Number one, we want to develop a process for reviewing the lesson plan. We want to make sure that we monitor that written, that taught, that learned curriculum and do that in a seamless way. Professional development, our teachers have done professional development this year alone, really in a dynamic way, online, virtually, the different options that the division has offered. We have some very talented people on our staff that are doing professional developments as well, utilizing those resources. We also, last year, we established a teaching, learning, and assessment committee. This is a cross-section of teacher leaders that are not department chairs, adding voice in their experience and looking at data and finding out what strategies are working, what isn't working. If Johnny's doing something great, we borrow that. The best educators are each. I was grabbing, I was grabbing this. We also are reaching out to our partners at the Virginia Department of Education. I just spoke with Ms. Christian, Christiana Brown. She is the curriculum developer for history and social sciences for the Virginia Department of Education. Sharing with her some of the things that we are doing, and saying, hey, if this what you see across the state is working, she said, okay, yeah, you guys are on the right track. So reaching out to our NDOE partners, walkthroughs, observations, just giving teachers feedback. Teachers love two things, school board, food and feedback. They love to know, hey, how am I doing? And one of the things that's really interesting is that a teacher came to me earlier this last week on our show, and he said, hey, Carlos, what am I doing? I said, hey, I'm doing A, B, C, D, X, Y, Z. He says, Carlos, go tell me. I, I gotta get back, what do I do? Well, think about this, consider that. One of the books that the superintendent shared with me was The Art of Coaching by Elena Aguar. I really kind of got into how you share feedback with people in a way that will be, they'll be receptive, and more importantly, will produce results for young people. And of course, special education teachers, we were, were joined by my special education department chair, a graduate student at the Davis Madison University, Valerie Newman, thank you for coming, Valerie. Our special education teachers, that's where the quick wins are. If we can get those kids over the hump, I think that we'll see some growth in our test scores, that's gonna be tremendous. We have established a number of years ago under Dr. Brinkley leadership, our SOL prep class, that's an opportunity really for us to get students that have some learning difficulties and students that need a little bit of push, that are classically identified, as I like to call it, to more help. And so we've been smart about scheduling, the management schedules, I mean, that's one of the most powerful tools that the principal has, so we've been smart about doing that with our special education teachers this year. Reviewing student data, qualitative and quantitative. Reviewing data, that's why it's hard. Creating assessments that are aligned, the assessments have to match. One of the feed, some of the feedback that I received last year from students was, hey, Mr. Stewart, so-and-so teacher, I didn't identify the teacher, but so-and-so teacher, what they taught wasn't in the text. So and every quarter, I meet the students and ask how things are going, and that's one of the things they talk about. And so that's one of the things that my team and I were looking at very closely. Again, making sure that we're live to what we need to do. And again, that professional development in terms of data, in terms of data. Okay, so, we're gonna go through your social strategies, our folks, they're good with that. Now, let's be data-wise. What is this data telling us? How can we use this data to inform what we do? And if that means we have to change something up so that kids can get better, then we'll do that. That's one of the things that's verid, that Jennifer, if I misplay you, that I'm proud about, our folks are nimble. They can monitor it just to make sure that things work for kids. That's, that's why we're in this business. Other highlights include, but are not limited to, reinforced high school attendance. Mrs. Wissinger has talked about some of the initiatives they're doing at the elementary school. I stole some of those and reeled up too. Sorry, Jennifer. Providing training in restorative practices in trauma-informed perspectives. Our school social worker has given me a good education over the past year and a half in terms of how do we look at student performance from the student's perspective with everything they have. From a less classical sense to a more nuanced 21st century perspective. And we have some staff that get it, and we have some staff that we're wrong. And so that professional development will continue. We meet regularly with student organizations in different affinity groups, engage on school perspectives. Now, Jeff, our school representative, she had a new job, that's why she's not here tonight, she told me the best part of our policies. And again, analyze practices and new methods to reach out to our community and connect with our students and our families better. Our teachers are working hard. The kids are working hard. Our parents, they're working hard too, so we want to just try to get everyone on the right seat on the bus, and I think we're doing a fine job of that when I'm working hard. That is the high school's presentation of our Continued School Program Plan, and on behalf of the elementary school principal, Mrs. Wissinger, and I, we, if there are any questions you may have at this point.
I was wondering about the, the smart special ed scheduling that you, could you elaborate on how, how smart, how smart?
Yes. There's two ways that it's really smart, like, not men's are smart, but pretty up there. So one of the things that we did was, we used our special ed staff, we're down one person than we did at last year with philosophy and other reasons. And so we looked at, I spoke with Valerie and Valerie, how can we look at who we need with? Valerie said, hey, Carlos, we can kind of divide people. I'm like, we gotta, you do one, divide a people. So we have some of our, our special education paraprofessionals pushing into more than one class in a period, trying to get a pay for our book. So for example, if you're a science teacher and you're giving your direct instruction the first thirty minutes of class, we have that special education paraprofessional there. If the students are doing an independent activity or a group activity where they need some touch, but not as much of a specialized touch, now that person's deployed somewhere else. Last year, that person was in the room the entire eighty minutes, now we're trying to be a lot smarter about that. The other thing that we did was with our SOL prep, we opened that up to students across a wide spectrum. So there's some students in there that have really good grades, they struggle with different executive function skills, different accommodations they need. So we're opening that up, a rising tide lifts all ships. Now, in those SOL prep classes, we're able to group students by ability level, and the ability isn't one level, it's multiple levels.
You'll notice in both plans too, there is still an emphasis on chronic absenteeism. This is something we've been talking about for quite a few years. We've spoken at the state level just about how really little control schools have over chronic absenteeism, especially in a, a community like ours sometimes where we do have folks that may go on vacation and provide awesome learning opportunities for the kids. We have, you know, a lot of families that do that, but our numbers are so small that those will still count against your chronic absenteeism, and now that's still going to be a factor in your, in your school accreditation. So that's something we're not escaping, and then you saw the governor's all-in Virginia plan that he came out with, called to action parents to partner with schools, figure out how we can make sure that the students are getting in the seats on time in school as much as possible for that in-person instruction, because the, the gaps are pretty wide that we have to close. So that's been part of this initiative. It will no longer be a standalone indicator in our accreditation, which we are very happy about that. But it will still be a part of a readiness indicator of some kind. We haven't seen it exactly yet. We hope that it will carry on for next school year to be implemented, but, well, that will stand the reason, but for now, it is still a standalone indicator for accreditation for your schools. And I feel like they're doing a great job. We have all ready to reduce that by a whole lot, so great, great job that families are connecting with us, there's a lot of outreach that happens, happens, a lot of great communication. So that's been a positive change.
So, I got a question. There's not an update from the state out there of where our goalposts are going to be?
They will be similar to where they were last year at this point. However, even though they will not, it seems to me from what I can see, is that they will not change your full accreditation measures, your, your, your full accreditation system. What they do have, General Assembly authority to do, statutory authority to do, is change the goalposts or your cut scores or things like that. So it remains yet to be seen whether that will happen. I sort of anticipate that it will, from the conversations I'm seeing in Richmond, just about, you know, the, the charts that show if the tests hadn't changed, this is where the students would still be, but now they're here because test scores went. So they may do some finagling with the cut scores that we may see that may impact us. That's why all of this great work that you've seen may not duly capture apples to apples in that way, where our scores do. in that way where our scores do come out. So it's very important to understand that. So it's great that you can see that they are looking at other measures besides what the state gives you to make sure that we really know every child by name and by ID, by number, whatever they need with our own data as well.
So Level 2 this year doesn't mean Level 2 next year potentially? That's a cut score situation you're talking about?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's a fun job.
It's a long work. Long work. I think, I think the teachers are already working and working hard. And I see all of these things are sitting on top of all of that. It just seems like a lot of, and it's.
One work. I'm assuming we're doing benchmarks periodically with that, with math reading. Are we gonna get a quarterly update on benchmarks and where we are? Is that possible?
I'm at that's the will of the board for future items. If you'd like a progress updating on data, I'm sure we can put that together.
I know it might add additional work, but it would be, it'd be nice to have that aggregated and see where that's going.
That's, yeah, that's the will of the board. That's something we can pull together. Right now, it's aggregated into different types of datasets. So to understand any one things by ever progress monitoring or those type of data, but basically a summary of the regular benchmark, or where we see at least, at least a summary. If that's something that you're.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to create this much.
Yeah, I don't want to create work for the sake of work.
Right.
I think it's beneficial for the public to see the progress that you're making on periodic basis with.
So are benchmarks something you react to internally more?
Generally, they are. They're not for grading, they're to be diagnostic major important structure.
Say kids, I remember from having kids at elementary school, they're starting tests every year and it did feel kind of like the teachers projected more pressure when they knew it was going to be reported out to a bigger group. I don't know if that's helpful for them, but the other parts are still.
You don't agree?
I like, I like. I like to visualize progress.
Yeah. Well, we can, you know, if you want to discuss that future item, so that we can see if that's the will of the board, maybe you can come up with a framework or something like that to share, really share some snapshots. But Rachel, to your point, you're exactly right. We have found that sharing out of early preliminary data and things like that is progress. Might put additional pressure on teachers, I can see that too.
If I had a set, when they see the benchmark lower in one area, they might.
In the bullet, yeah.
Their teacher, their teaching will teach to that internally perhaps. I mean, I, that's what I thought the right word.
Yeah, that's a diagnostic. So they say, okay, well, here we're, you know, three questions on standard 7.4. I know my kids did not do well on that. I need to go back and remediate and res teach that when I have the opportunity to do that.
Thank you both. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I saw that the data point in here about, one more thing about attendance, this implementation of setting breakfast has been shown to improve attendance by 6%. So I asked, I asked Jack and Tindrick how we're doing on that, just because we were coming up, we have a grant that we're measuring progress. The USDA has made some changes where the high school may be eligible. We're waiting to see when that cut, it went from 40% to 25% to be eligible for free produce. So that may come soon. But what we found was, I asked her, what is the differential? Because we needed to make a 19% margin in sales to be able to break even for implementing CDP, their community eligibility provision at the elementary school to provide free breakfast and lunch. And so we need 19%. Where are we about now for October? 67% increase. So kids are eating so much more just with that implementation. So that's wonderful. So very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item 4.3 is our separate review. You all love this one. So we must certify that the computer juice policy is reviewed by the board. That has been loaded, so if you have all reviewed that, we will come up, I can think of a straight line. Or no, we just have to show. No, we just have to show.
Yeah.
Acknowledged and corrected. Just in a minute. So that has been loaded for review. And 4.4, Mrs. Kathy Zierrods, our school psychologist, will be giving an update in November. We've had it's October, it is bullying prevention month. So this month, we just provided a flyer of what's going to be happening this month. And then next month, she'll come back and show you all the pictures and the wonderful activities that have happened. Does anybody? Too many tags. All right, so there'll be quite a few activities planned to raise awareness about bullying prevention. Morning announcements, there'll be tip shares showing kindness to others, how to report bullying, supporting those who have had bullying. There will be a poster contest. Wednesday, October 18th is our unity day. So wear orange and show that we are together against bullying and unite in our kindness, acceptance, and division. There will be a spirit week. That's this week.
Yeah, this week. Ours Western Day.
Western Day. But anyway, I'm a parent. I couldn't mind her, thank you. That'll be fun. I'll start with hello week, October 16th through 20th, that encourages students to just start by saying hello to somebody who may look lonely or be isolated. And then we're providing some parent resources as well. So this one, home to families, so that there's guides for parents here, how to help your child if you feel that they are experiencing bullying. But there'll be much more of an update after, so next month. All right, and that concludes the presentation, Superintendent.
Thank you very, very, very much. Moving on to the reports that were presented.
Right, yes, I did. We had with our director, who's now on the turn VP, during second half of our committee But I heard, I saw some pictures, I heard that the harvest festival was, last Saturday was a success. And so many, so many people in the community supported it, both by being there and by by sponsoring, get ahead of time. You can elaborate, I know you can elaborate.
You know, also, I just wanted to thank everybody from the school who showed up. There are so many students. And I myself have never had a deep fried oreo until I got one at the, at the high school table.
All right. And Cecilia Lopiano was, was in the Read. Cecilia Lopiano, who was here earlier in the audience, was selected to be the Read program coordinator, the new coordinator. And she's working on curriculum for both accelerated readers and struggling readers. And they will be relaunching the Read alongside the actual program in January. And it will operate to be a long-term school. And this quality of school improvement program is now in full swing. And there's going to be an open house that we all work right with too, on Thursday, December 14th, from 4:30 to 5:30. And we're going to have a lot of community attendance as well as just parents and that. And then the little ones, the knowledge part, the imagination library will be on Saturday, November 4th, from 11:00 to 1:00 at the library. So if anybody knows books who have kids age 0 to 5, if you know about it, there'll be lunch, there'll be book readings and crafting activities, that is free at that.
Thank you. Thanks to the Holden Park team. That's the Holden Park.
Right, it was at Holden Park, yeah. They had two great weekends in Brooklyn.
Yeah, it's a lot. Take one and appreciate them.
That was, that was Holden, close to 1,000.
Thank God.
800 people. That showed that. I was there for 900, a hundred parking cars, 200 or 250.
I would've said Daniel was our man. Sorry, I'm sorry, yeah. I would've been there.
So great, well advertised.
Yeah. I like the signs.
All right, moving on, Mr. Bro, MDS.
Well, I was not there. Washington was there.
I have a little bit of a report. So the Mount Vista Governor School Governing Board and Academic Advisory Board met jointly at the last meeting on September 21st. At that meeting, there was a commendation for Dr. Dave Jack, who had stepped down from the faculty or superintendency, who had served on the governing board for quite some time. So we did a commendation for him. And then we heard a variety of informational items, including the graduate report, some diversity reports that were in the Mount Vista Governing Board goals. We had a document from the Department of Education psych evaluation, which was really outstanding. There were pretty much all commendations and exceeding expectations in the program. The only area that they'd let us to develop more is to create more of a unified student body between the two sites, which is difficult to do in Middletown and Lynnmoreton. But overall, they were very impressed by the program and all the folks involved. They really loved some of the stuff we've been working on over the past five years or so, incorporating a lot more social emotional support for our gifted learners that are at Mount Vista. It's a strenuous teenage program. And then with the COVID impacts that happened, we definitely saw the impact of student body. So Kelly Poppins is doing an outstanding job as executive director, implementing those, those recommendations. And that was pretty much it.
We'll be meeting again next Thursday.
We do.
Is that right? Let us come.
Next scheduled meeting, October 19th.
Great, moving on. Next item is not to comment. Chris, you know, I'd like to address more this evening. Come to the podium and state your name and district.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Beck, and I'm in Mr. Bro's district. Before I get started, I'd like to add something that Mr. Sue actually said earlier, and that was, you know, asking your child, what did you learn today? Of my father, who passed away in 92, he would always ask us what made us smile, what made us laugh. Did that, with his grandkids all the way up until he passed away. And in doing that, they didn't realize he was making them talk like this kind of thing. And they would engage in this chat. My concern is probably going to ruffle a few feathers. I know that chronic absenteeism has been a problem common to a lot of my concerns has to do with late arrival or tardiness, particularly with how it's hamming and how it's affecting students, particularly student athletes. At the high school, if a student is not in the building at 8:00, they're tardy. Period. Depending on who is interpreting that, they can be tardy one day and not be able to participate at school later. They could be tardy three times and not be able to participate, so I'll say four. Wrap the headaches. Policy on this district, or any district that I have been able to find, any district. Spoken with DHS, I've talked to people at the Department of Education, and they say that the tardy policy or labor policy is set by the district. The districts around us, some of them I think are absolutely way too late. These students need 10 or 15 minutes to pass that. If a student knows that if they're 30 seconds late, they're not going to be able to participate in the afternoon, some of them are saying, let's appoint people in the school. Give these students a few minutes before you take away band or football or any other after-school activities. I have a personal best in this, that child has an issue, that's not lying. I have seen in one's parents, you don't hear this part, very much exceeding the speed limit to get their child here before 8:00. I'm concerned we're not going to have an accident out on this road with a student pride that doesn't want to miss football practice because they're 30 seconds late. And in my research, you look at Madison County, Gisborne, I think that's too late. Orange County gives them half a day before they take their thing away. Again, I think that's too late. Green County is 15 minutes. Here at the elementary school, it's 8:25. Granted, younger kids are harder to corral than they need to be in the high school. Quickly, it gives them half a day. Call year, staff, spots, agent, they just stay in attendance and leave it up to the coach for discretion. I think it should be left up to the presidents. If a student is constantly 15 minutes late, then there's something going on. They're taking advantage of the race here. You look at Green County, they give them 15 minutes before they take anything away. Being engaged with few students, having three go through here, I went through this with myself, my mom did, and we've been here since, Mr. Bro, I know you say your wife is 1700s, we got you, Dean. We go way back. And that's, I want to give these kids a little bit of time. You know, 10, 15 minutes, I think you'll probably see tenants go up. It might be one or two percent of guns, but that's one or two percent of guns. I mean, that's, that's my concern, and I take it for what it is. But I really think they should be given some time.
But I appreciate your, I appreciate your coming to speak and listen tonight. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to follow this up? All right, thank you. Thank you for speaking up. All right, moving on to new businesses or any new business. I thought I would mention a few things. On Thursday, the Sweetwater Ridge is hosting a grand opening of their tech center. And I'm not going to be able to make it, but all of us were invited. Some of us will be able to be there.
I'm here.
Be there, I'm not sure who is going to be there. I'm not to be there. Friday, can you just speak quickly about what the USDA is doing on Friday?
Sure. So the USDA is sending some visitors to our site on Friday to observe the beginning of the implementation of the healthy incentives program grant that we received. Rattler County Elementary School is the only site in Virginia that receives that federal grant. So we have some federal program administrators coming to observe. I think the press has been invited to see that visit. So they're going to come and observe the farm table program a little bit, the courtyard, and then go to the cafeteria to observe how our main culinary chef in cafeteria is working with the cafeteria staff to prepare scratch made meals. So it's going to be a deep visit.
What's on the menu Friday?
I believe they're making a scratch made pizza, which we actually had to try a sample. It's amazing. It's really good. I heard like, I even love my daughter, Rosie, I appreciate that. But she tried it as well, and she was like, I would buy this every day. It's so, yeah. Once a month.
So I'm not going to be able to make that on board, right?
Yeah. If you want to talk. If you would like to, you're welcome, yes. We'll gather at the courtyard about 10 o'clock in the morning on Friday here at the elementary school. We can make it. Hey. Sorry, I'm missing a big pizza.
And the third thing, I would thank you, Dr. Curts. The third thing I should have mentioned, there's a new organization that is just for health and football, Dean. And the administrator of that organization is one of our career, our fourth grade teacher, Ms. Rattler. And there's a practice city named as well, or they don't, it's just me. And he's uninjured. Why are we getting that? All right. So it's an exciting new thing getting started. And apparently, a lot of enthusiasts were at it. They say they have enough to deal with. So, yeah, it's exciting. And I just want to make sure people are aware. I think that was all I had. Is there any quest for future agenda items? I think we need to make sure we have some unity around the summary metrics. around the summary of metrics, report idea. What are we expecting? Uh, is it good, is it bad? So before we leave this forum, we should make sure we have some consensus about what we're asking. We want some type of summary of student performance.
You mean, I mean, you mean for the benchmarking?
Benchmarking that we brought earlier. Is it a good idea to request a quarterly update of performance or not? Right. That's my understanding. We need to talk about before we leave here. So they know clearly what's expected. I mean, you're pros and cons, right?
Yeah.
I, I was actually thinking, you have a lot of different tools you're already using, A's, something, Inra. I don't even know what that looks like. I was actually thinking, instead of creating some new product to maybe just expose us to what that looks like, uh, instead of creating a new, uh, summary document of some type, that maybe just a report that we can say, oh, this is one of the tools that's being used in how it tracks.
Well, I think it's helpful, too. We could do that, or something like we used to do with the well check and do like an academic well check. That might be, where we can give you just a summary overview of here's the things that are going really well. This is what we're seeing progress being made. And here's an area we're still concerned with. I think that's great to speak to.
I think that makes sense.
Even though we're all burdening so much on data.
Yeah, we don't get too much into the weeds because you're right, I worry about the pressures that have been put on, on certain staff and, um, teachers and things. But we can give an overview because that's what we're all measuring and keeping our eyes on anyway. Uh, you will get a more in-depth than the board because that's one of my goals that we have to talk about every other month. So I can give you more in-depth, you know, information on that if you like.
So the first semester is over in December. So there may be some data in January?
Sure.
So, I mean, it's not going to be...
Yeah, February, next month.
So we'll get some kind of, uh, summary, what's like, some kind of pulse check?
Absolutely. We'll probably invite Karen Ellis back to give her update on how, or she sees things. She's involved in each area. Um, but yes, she, we have our, our eyes on very particular targets as you've seen the continuous...
So it'll be some kind of academic pulse check.
Absolutely.
Right.
That's awesome.
As a part of, you heard some different, like I wrote down integrity, which I'm not familiar with, systematic phonics. Um, you know, or really, we had a report on, so I am familiar with that. A little bit, you know, refer to a technique that there are things that would be interesting for us to know.
I don't know what they mean.
We'd fund it too, for the kids.
We used to be, it's kind of a problem.
Oh, yeah, we could do that. That'd be good.
And more follow-up. I'm showing you something right now if you want some.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it could be, could help us understand.
Wouldn't it be good for the public to know that, sir?
Yeah, that's great. And to see the science of reading in action, and that's something we have been really working toward for many years before the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. Uh, so to see the different types of routines and what we're talking about when we teach morphology or a higher routine or the Orton Gillian routines, they're, they are very specific and systematic. So it's important for people to understand that. It does take quite a lot of training and, um, and Miss Wessinger has gotten that, but it needs it in K-3, so it's amazing. Ahead of schedule, I'll tell you.
Yeah, my understanding is that the reading teaching has gone from sort of more subject-based and feeling good about reading to more, I learned sort of phonics when I was growing. I think it's like this pendulum is moving back towards phonics. Um, again, but it wasn't phonics when my son started learning to read. So I taught him phonics at work because I knew that was easier.
We're back to phonics, I hope.
We have less than too much here. We've been, um, proposed as...
We can do both, right?
Both, yes, some of us. But yes, science of reading, teaching reading like you teach math. Those fundamental skills need to be there for your, for your accuracy, fluency later. Absolutely. It's good stuff to get out.
Is there any other, uh, requests for future agenda items?
There's a strong track for, for, uh, silver somewhere.
Yeah, you wouldn't get any report next month, hopefully. Um, we had some preliminary readings and things come back. We sent back some questions about, you know, just making sure that that's accurate. And we did an analysis, we have the final course findings coming very soon. Ahead of schedule, because we didn't think it would come until spring, so, yes.
Anything else? All right, our next major schedule school board meeting is on November fourteenth. It's going to be in the library at the high school. And, uh, way before that, we have an election, right? A week before that?
Yes.
So, uh, I didn't make your job, would you vote?
Yeah, vote.
At this time, we have a motion to go into closed session.
I move the board to convene a closed session for the following purpose, discussing specifically pointing to the staff for last by position and coaching positions and setting these banks, regardless of resignation of professional position and discussion of the superintendent's goals pursuant to code, Virginia Code, Section two point two, that's three, seven, one, one, A, one.
That's a really long motion.
It's brilliant. I've memorized it.
Did you? Do you have a motion to the Secretary of the Senate? Secretary of the Department of Labor? I, I, I still have some of this over.